Call the order. Start of the political session.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, my God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
The roll call. Kristin Jory.
Here.
Kayla Keizer.
Here.
Kristin Blockwood. Steph Euler.
Here.
Debbie Kowalas.
Here.
Shannon Mills.
Here.
Grace Kelly.
Here.
Ava Benchman. Takes us to item two, agenda adjustments. There are no adjustments. Item three, approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes with one amendment, Jody, under new business policies opposing, I was opposed. Thank you.
I'll start.
All as a favor? Motion carries? Item four, proponentations and presentations, aid donations.
Yep, you have in your packet, we want to thank Wanda Levitt. One Levitt made fifty pairs of handmade mittens and donated them. We have an estimated value at five hundred dollars for those, and that's a, that's an ongoing thing that Ms. Levitt does for the school district, and there's a picture in your packet of those, so we want to thank Wanda Levitt for that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Levitt. B, committee acknowledgements.
I'll start. I just wanted to acknowledge the Herman Middle School teachers and their great idea for doing some caroling outside of the Mark Middle School before the holiday. That was a great addition to the festive season, and also it was nice to see the bulldozers begin the track this week by, well, I should say the field replacement initially, but the project starting.
I want to congratulate all the students at the high school that participated in the Poetry Out Loud last week. I think it was great to see them all express themselves.
Thank you.
He club did a charity in the library and had nine different students ask for gifts for this holiday season, and I'd like to thank Kowalas for donating those gifts to those students who need. That was very appreciated. And Student Council just finished a collection for the shop house. It was mostly toiletries, and they were given just before winter break. And NHS just finished their book collection, and they were given to the Literacy Foundation for Children, and we, those were given Thursday before break.
Great, thank you. Okay, that takes us to public comments. Thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. We're about to convene into the public comment period of our meeting. While state law in Maine requires a public comment item on agendas of a full meeting of the school committee, we also believe it is crucial for us to hear from our community members about their concerns and issues, and so are pleased to have this on the agenda as an agenda item. Having said that, please note that the committee is here to listen. The public comment period is not designed to be a discussion. Accordingly, please do not expect the committee to respond to your concerns and questions tonight. We take your concerns and questions seriously and won't have sufficient time to process and research issues at any meeting. We will, however, respond to your questions and concerns at a future meeting or have the proper staff member get back to you at the appropriate time. At the outset, we ask the speakers to identify themselves with name and town of residence. I also want to point out that per our policy, we are unable to entertain any comments or questions about school personnel or specific roles. Please know, however, that we take personnel concerns very seriously. On these matters, we ask you to go through the appropriate administrative channels. The committee will now entertain public comments from community members. Each individual speaker is allotted three minutes, and we have a lot of people who are looking to speak tonight, so we are going to try to hold to that three minute. And the guidelines that I just communicated also go for the public comment during the specific agenda items. So with that, we'll start with Brian Venziano.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Members of the Herman School Committee, my name is Brian Venziano. I'm a Herman resident for seventeen years, and I'm a parent of two children in the Herman School System. I am here tonight with several other parents, and for the first time, we have organized ourselves in an effort to better communicate our concerns. We have no political agendas. We are not politically aligned or religiously affiliated with each other. We met and organized ourselves in these very seats in the auditorium. The primary attributes that we share are we are Herman residents, we want our students and teachers to be successful, we have concerns regarding our schools, we have attended Herman School Committee meetings, and our concerns have not been addressed by the school committee. We welcome all members of the community and invite anyone that has like concerns about our schools to contact us. Mr. Chair, request clarification on the agenda. The second reading of policy IJJ is on the agenda under item six, old business, paragraph B, sub-paragraph A. Will you be taking public comments specific to IJJ when we reach that portion of the agenda in accordance with policy BED and BEDH and prior to any committee discussion?
Yes.
Was there a sign-up sheet for public comment for that portion of the agenda as indicated in policy BEDH, paragraph one C?
The sign-up was for the public comment period we're in right now.
Okay, so there's no set sign-up for, once we get to that agenda item?
This, this period is open for any discussion, including agenda items.
We will be able to adjust, address agenda items when they are on the published agenda, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Then I will reserve my comments for the appropriate time on the published agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Carolyn Delmonico.
I reserve my comments for the appropriate time on the published agenda. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Josh Anderson.
I reserve my time for the slot on the published agenda.
Eric Wood.
Mr. Chair, I reserve my time to discuss during the appropriate time on the, on the agenda.
Amy Sosa.
I too will reserve my time to discuss this on the appropriate space of the agenda.
Superintendent Grant and School Board. I'll make it quick. I just have a comment to make about November's School Board meeting. I've talked to you folks before about words, and they have meaning. I have two words I wish to bring up. Decorum. Decorum is a Latin word for what is becoming, appropriate, befitting, seemly, propriety of speech, appearance, or behavior, seamliness, or decency. The second word is civility, Latin for civellatus, politeness, or an act of politeness, courtesy, kind attentions. And what I'm bringing these two words up for is November's School Board meeting. There was a gentleman expressing his First Amendment rights. The school board took offense at how he was presenting it, and they recessed. I'm not chastising you folks, I'm chastising the ladies in the back of the room who started to shout and say, "You don't live here, you've already said that, get out of here, go home", and a bunch of other things. One, if those were teachers, they lacked decorum, and most of all, they lack civility. And as teachers, when they said, "You've already said that before," I, as a teacher, when I come across a point, and I understand that my students have not grasped what I've been trying to say, I repeat it, and I keep teaching it until they grasp it. And when the, if they were teachers saying that, that is totally unprofessional, and it's just mob rule, and they should be ashamed of themselves. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tina Tagg.
I reserve my comments for later.
Kimberly Stewart from Herman. I speak for many here when I say the past year as a Herman resident and parent has been unsettling, frustrating, confusing, and scary. The tension in our community is palpable. We've been distracted and derailed by personal agendas external to our community, and it's done nothing but create detriment to our school district, educators, parents, and children. I am here tonight to remind you that this all started because of the responsibility that we have to our children in hopes of, and I'm here in hopes of opening a healthy, solution-based discussion regarding literature provided to our students. I'm here as a parent who believes in being transparent with my own children in a way that exposes them to as much as possible before they fly the coop, so they can do so prepared, informed, and confident. It is my right to do so at my own pace and in terms that they can absorb. That is my right, but it is their privilege. Not all children have equal privilege at home. There are children from all walks of life in our schools, and it is not my right to control the resources and information that they have access to when and if they need it. In IJJ, under criteria for selection, it states instructional and library media materials selected should take into consideration the varied interests, abilities, and maturity levels of the students served. Varied maturity levels. Because maturity levels can vary based on one's own emotional experience. It also states that we will stimulate growth of ethical standards and that we will provide information that enables students to make intelligent decisions. I've read and, I've read the proposed content standards and sampled some of the books in question. I agree some of these books better serve the shelves that are meant for adults only. However, the quality and value of some of them are completely subjective to the individual experiences or maturity levels of our students. I propose that we entertain a path forward that allows us to preserve Herman as the public school system in which we have chosen for our children despite many private and conservative options. That we take advantage of the optional parental restrictions that are already in place within our libraries, develop content standards as a district, and allow parents to set restrictions based on those instead of publisher ratings. That we make it policy for all books to be checked out, even if they aren't leaving the library, so we can track circulation and interest accurately, and so parents can see what their children are reading in order to help safely and responsibly navigate their supplemental learning. I am committed to working with our school district to understand all options available to us, and I hope you will join me. I have just one more sentence. I urge us all to remember that we are here in the best interest of our children, even if that looks different for each of us. Thank you.
Can I just ask a moment, thank you. Thank you, Stewart. Next up is Gilbert Reed.
I reserve my comments.
My name is Diana Leach. I'm a Herman resident, a Herman teacher, and a proud parent of Herman graduates. I just want to say, I just want to say how grateful I am for our superintendent, Micah Grant, our principals, guidance counselors, teachers, ed techs, all of our staff. I want to say I am grateful for our public school. I'm speaking tonight because I'm very concerned about recent pushes to change policy IJJ, trying to create a rating system. Our library books are already listed and available to everyone on the school website. The current policy is already effective, allowing parents the choice to flag a book so it cannot be signed out, but it also allows others the choice to sign out those books if they wish. Parents may look up titles, they make decisions for their own children. As a parent, I considered books with difficult topics to offer some of the best opportunities to talk with my children. The gift of being a parent was helping my children think about difficult topics with the values I hoped to instill. I cannot imagine a book having more influence over my kids than I do or did. In some instances, books brought about important conversations, opportunities that might have been missed and lost. One more thing about our libraries. We belong to a community with a public school. Therefore, libraries need to have books reflecting the public. Students deserve to see stories that might mirror their own experiences and give voice to those experiences, even if they're painful, even if they're difficult. Please know that our school district is doing awesome things. We are a wonderful school district. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize if I mispronounced his name. Carol Franklin.
I reserve my right. It's inappropriate.
Janie Frank.
Hi there, my name is Rebecca Hinchliffe, and I am a resident of Levant. One of the items on your agenda this evening is criteria for selection of age-appropriate books that students have access to in school libraries. The books currently available that I am mostly concerned about are littered with incest, sex, rape, profanity, prostitution, and child trafficking. This is not about one moral view or perspective. Every parent has the right to decide what they think is appropriate for their child. The school is not the place for these mature topics to be introduced. By providing sexually explicit material to minors, they are usurping the parental role in ways that endanger minors. Exposing children to sexually explicit photos or writing has been shown to normalize sexual violence, create unrealistic expectations for intimacy, and increase the risk of addiction. Now imagine for a moment that these same books were available in video form. We have all heard it said that the book was better than the movie, right? Any thoughts as to how these books would be rated at the theater? The Motion Picture Association utilizes an organization called the Classification and Rating Administration to determine movie ratings. In their system, an R-rated movie is defined as containing adult material, including adult themes and activity, hard language, intense or persistent violence, sexually oriented nudity, drug abuse, or other elements. Children under seventeen are not permitted to watch rated R movies without an adult, which would include most of the students within our school system. An NC seventeen movie contains violent sex, aberrational behavior, drug use, and other elements that most parents would consider too strong or off limits for viewing by their children, and is only available for ages eighteen or older. Did you know that in order to work for the Rating Administration, each raider must be a parent, and the age of their children must be between five to fifteen years old? The stated goal on their website is to give parents the information they need to decide whether a film is appropriate for their family. The process of rating movies is detailed and specific for the main purpose of protecting children. For these reasons, it is obviously essential for you, our elected school board members, to implement a detailed and specific method of selecting appropriate books for our children to access. A content standard would act to protect students. The ability for parents to opt out of specific books is simply not good enough. A student may not be able to check out specific books from the library, but opting out does nothing to prevent them from reading it during study halls or before or after school. As a parent, what my children see or read when they are with me is my responsibility. Providing sexually explicit material to students is usurping that parental role. If students have rubrics to determine guidelines for academic grading, businesses have job qualifications for new employees, and movies have a system for ratings, school libraries should certainly have content standards for books. In fact, this very thing is currently taking place in school districts across the country. This is not about banning books, it's about protecting children. Please choose to protect children and vote for content standards and greater parental involvement. Thank you.
Again, this is a little more. Takes us to David Casavant.
Good evening. My name is David Casavant, and I am a resident of Hamden. I attended the meeting last month, and I'm speaking here tonight to apologize for the behavior of another Hamdenite. Residents from other school districts have no genuine reason for making statements at this podium. Regardless of proximity, that is as logical as it would be to how someone from Australia or Indonesia is standing here before you. The idea is that all of you are perfectly capable of making your own decisions and statements regarding the education of your students. That's an extension of self-rule. Having people from other school districts at this podium is an insult to all of you. As an apology, I will address certain concerns that I heard expressed at this podium and at similar meetings in Hamden. Before doing so, I would want you to note that I'm a licensed attorney and a CPA. With that in mind, you should not let anyone hold the federal court's decision or the settlement against Hamden over your head. That ruling was on a temporary restraining order to prevent a ban from taking effect. It was not a final decision. On page twenty-four of her decision, the judge wrote, and I quote, "At this stage, the decision of which party will ultimately prevail is a close call." This language indicated the need for a settlement or a protracted legal battle. Comparatively speaking, forty thousand dollars is not a large settlement. You, along with other school districts in Maine, are unfortunately stuck with a nearsighted legal system that has yet to duly consider the implications of twenty-first century social media on First Amendment rights, and with the main law that makes this a public forum. Initially well-intended, the legislature could not have anticipated the type of antics you face from wannabe shock jocks whose true concern is the advancement of their social media celebrity status. Regrettably, there is currently no political will to address the problem so you can conduct orderly meetings. It's perfectly understandable that you have resorted to using expletives in light of the adult version of playground bullying that you have faced. Ironically, while attention is being drawn to free speech rights of people at, at this and other similar podiums, school boards have quite understandably lost focus of the First Amendment rights of the students they serve. In its nineteen eighty-two PICO versus Board of Education decision, the Supreme Court ruled that politically motivated censorship of books violated the First Amendment rights of students. The court wrote, and I quote, "Just as access to ideas makes it possible for citizens generally to exercise their rights of free speech and press in a meaningful manner, such access prepares students for active and effective participation in the pluralistic, often contentious society in which they will soon be adult members. The special characteristics of the school library make that environment especially appropriate for the recognition of First Amendment rights of students." Let me close, as I started, with an apology for the actions of a fellow Hamden resident. I hope that the bad behavior demonstrated at this podium doesn't distract you from preserving the First Amendment rights of your students. Student board members, I hope you can stand up for your rights and for the intellectual freedom that comes with being able to choose or not to choose a book on the shelf. You know that given all of the information that is freely available on the internet, movies, TVs, and social media platform, that any effort to ban books from libraries due to sexual content is pointless. Thank you for your time. Having provided for this apology, I will now leave this meeting to allow you to self-govern in the way that you, as duly elected individuals, and the taxpayers of this school district deem best. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan Delly. Allie Williams. Thank you. Deb Farham.
I'm Deb Farham. I live here in Herman. I've had the pleasure of living in Herman my entire life. I went to school here, I raised my three sons here, who have, who went on to college, and are productive citizens. I have grandchildren who are currently in this school, and I have three new grandbabies born last year. Can't wait till they enter the Herman School System. I was a school board member for nine years. I've sat where you've sat, I appreciate all that you're going through. I did not have to endure this. It is a challenge, and I really do applaud your efforts to stick to it. It's not easy. My son, my youngest son, at one point graduated from high school and decided that he wanted to go out into the world. And he decided, nope, I need to be more focused. So he became an ed tech in the Herman School System. And I remember the first week I got to talk with him after How Is It?, and he proceeded to, almost in tears, tell me about what a challenge it was to watch some of the students he had to deal with go through their daily trauma. He was almost in tears, and he stuck to it, and he now has a teaching degree. Our teachers have to endure so much more than when I was in school. And I would dare say what most of the audience has had to endure when they went in school. We have kids rattled by drug abuse, we have poverty, we, even in the town of Herman, we are so prosperous, but yet there are students who go without on a daily basis and struggle, whether it's personal trauma, bullying, all of these things that our kids have to endure. And our staff, our teachers, are behind them one hundred percent. They are the same teachers, many who helped encourage my son to look beyond and go above and beyond. They do that every day. I listen to the stories of my grandchildren tell about the fun things that they did in school. And I really think this particular issue that became front and center after a movement, it is a movement that came with a political and a religious bias to direct people to feel a certain way about books that they may not agree with, about a lifestyle that they may not agree with. And I think we're missing the opportunity to teach our kids to be accepting. The issue about books is a challenge indeed, and I think I trust you to make the decisions that we need to for the best interest of our kids. So thank you again, I appreciate it. And one more thing. I'm the person who went off at the November meeting.
Please address the board.
I'm the person who went off to a particular member of the Hamden community who has made it his it his mission, and maybe even a profit-making mission, to come at us. And I think after I heard about this for months, about what our teachers, our staff, and our students are having to endure, I felt it was important to shout him down. And I don't know if I'm gonna control myself tonight because I kinda had enough of it. Thank you again.
Thank you. All right, takes us to the presentations. Presentation on testing results.
So I'm gonna ask the board, we have the front row down here, and Mrs. Perry, current coordinator, is going to do the testing results, just a brief update on the NUIAS scores, and just walk us through some of those things. We'll put the screen down right here.
Thank you, Mr. Brian, and school board for having us tonight. I'm excited to be here. I have been in front of you all for a while, so excited to see you all. Tonight, I'm going to review our NUIAS data with you, have you go over what it looks like, and let you know how to look at the data that you'll be providing today, as well to give a more in-depth look at it. That'll be all. sort of our screening tool. Now it's used throughout the U.S. as our standard-based assessment. And the NUIAS assessments are designed to target a student's performance in mathematics, reading, language usage, and science. These tests are tailored to an individual's current achievement level. This gives each student a fair opportunity to show what he or she knows and can do. NUIAS assessments are used to measure a student's progress or growth in school, and that's really important. Really looking at the student's growth and our growth throughout the year and year to year, and we'll take a look at that today. So what I've done is I compiled first these first four slides. You're going to see our Fall '22 data, by grade level. And when you look at this, going across the top, you see grade, and then it gives us our percentile, and we categorize them as low, low average, average, high average, and high. And oftentimes, people really wanna see how we did as per grade level standards. And again, as I mentioned, NUIAS is really looking at student growth, so that's not a really well-measured, but we can look at it as a measure per the grade standards and look how we're compared to those standards. So that's what that last column is, average or above grade level, meaning RIT. RIT is the RIT score. That's what we call that score that our students get. So that's sort of that state standard that we're looking for. And what I did is I took the number of students that were at or above the state standard per the number of students at that grade level to get our percentage for that grade level in the very end. Within each category, you're going to see, so in this first one, per low kindergarten, when you look in that first box, the count means the number of students at that grade level that fell within that category for kindergarten. And then at 3%, means it's 3% of the kindergarten students fell within the low category. So that's how we read the data going through this. And as a district, we look at this data and we identify where in our programming we have strengths and challenges, and that's how we identify where we need to make changes in our programming or in our curriculum as a whole district. That might be a new grade level, or that might be at like the elementary or middle school or high school. This next slide is looking at our fall reading or all per comment. Again, it's set up exactly the same way, so a lot of you are going to be interested in that last column. I see a lot of eyes going over there. The other thing I wanna mention is when you see your child's percentile data, a percent and a percentile is different. And school board, you can see a path like this. And for many people that don't work with data all the time, you may not realize that when you're looking at standardized test scores, an average student would score 50%. We're often just looking at a score range of 1 to 100, and we think that our kiddos are supposed to be reaching 100, but really 50% is that average score, and that's what we're looking for. So most people on a standardized score test would actually achieve between 25% and 75% like a bell curve. And that's where we get that bell curve, what people have heard about, and that's our normal range. So when we see those numbers, anything above 50, we know that's what we're looking for. Between 25 and 75, that's the average, when you're looking at the grade through the loop. Then we move to language usage, and you're gonna see that kindergarten through second grade, we don't have that on here because they don't start their KDA until the third grade. And then science, they take our science NUIAS in fifth through 10th grade. The next set of slides we're gonna look at is what we call cohort slides, and this is where we dig deeper as a district. So measuring cohort data is when we measure the NUIAS data across years. We identify cohorts of students to measure growth. These cohorts are typically grade level or classes. For our measures in this presentation, we decided to use grade levels because that's how we presented the first section. In the following slides, you're going to see 2022 to 23 student data. So it's the 2022, 23 grade level, fall '21 compared to fall of '22. Wanna show that slide so I can... So when we look at first grade, that first box, 2022, those are our first grade students in the year '22. The '21, that's that same class of first graders like in kindergarten. Raise your hand if you need to explain that again. Yes. All right. So you don't see anything in the '21 column from kindergarten because they don't take any pre-k, okay? So again, this data is set up the same format across the top, but now we're comparing the same students from '21 fall to '22 fall. And when you come over here, something that's important to remember. So let's use, right here, ninth grade. So, fall of '21, this is our eighth grade class, fall '21, same group of students, they're at 53%. Fall of '22, this same group of students are now in ninth grade. They're at 67%, which is a great gain all on its own, but there are also 67% at ninth grade standards. Here, there were 53% at eighth grade standards. So, really, 53% of them grew a whole year academically, plus another 14%. So that's showing incredible growth. So when we look at this data, we're able to see our growth, and that's what NUIAS is really about. Not comparing it to others, but comparing our students to, to their growth and seeing how they're doing as instructors and how they're taking it all in. This is our reading. Again, comparing the '21 to '22. And we do not expect you to memorize all this. We will put this on the website, and it will be there for you to see and go through. And if you do have any questions, we would expect that you would follow up either with me or any of the principals if it's a specific elementary, middle, or high school question. Our language usage. And again, third grade doesn't have that there because they don't take it in the second grade, that's why. That's empty. And science.
Yep. So I would just follow up with what Mrs. Perry said with the data. You could dig so deep into this data. We've been doing this test at the middle school, we've been doing it about five years, high school a couple of years, right, Brian? Elementary school, Mrs. Davis, what, three or four years now? She back there?
Yes.
Good. Four years, thank you. It's, it's pretty amazing, and most of our parents now have seen these RIT scores coming home and hearing these numbers and trying to figure them out. So if you have like a really deep question, I would highly recommend you follow up with one of the building principals. Certainly, we can try to answer any broad questions that you might have, and this is the state test now. This has been made the state test. There is no more, you know, MEA or this is what we use for our accountability measures. And I, just to piggyback on what Mrs. Perry said, thank you, Mrs. Perry, for doing that. It's a lot of data to sit through and pull together, try to figure out the important pieces that you wanna highlight, obviously. Our primary focus with NUIAS is student growth. We care about individual student growth and cohort growth. That is what we focus on. We want to move the needle year to year and session to session, fall to spring or spring to spring, whatever that measurement that you happen to choose. And so our primary goal is always about what those individual students are doing and how much they're growing in a given academic year. And the wonderful thing about NUIAS, you get to see just a small glimpse of '21 to '22. We have that now for many of our students going back to when these young ladies were sitting in the middle school taking it for the first time, saying, why are we doing this? Well, I've got four or five years of data on these students now, and so it really allows parents to see how their students are doing in all these subject areas. So I would just kind of emphasize that part of it, and then certainly entertain any broad questions.
That was actually my question, if you can tell if a student has taken it seriously or not, meaning how much time that they've taken on it versus just clicking through.
So I would, I would, if we didn't have such a large audience and more things, I would throw that to Mr. Walsh, because that's one of his greatest frustrations. As a building principal, for years, I would have teachers come down and say, these kids don't take it seriously. They did a 50-question test in 18 minutes. That's really fast. The nice thing is, you do know, you get the time it takes for a student to take a test, so you have a very good idea whether that result is even valid and shows what the student truly knows. And the other element of that is, as the proctor of the exam, you actually get warnings while your students are taking the test, and if they go too, if they go too fast, it will actually pause them, and the proctor has to come over and enter a proctor code, and there's a sloth that comes up that... I keep cut, can I cut again?
Yeah.
There's a sloth that comes up and says, is it slow down or you're going too fast, whatever determines. So we, you have that ability to kind of gauge the level of seriousness. The other element that we didn't break down for you is math is actually broken into five aspects, right? You have statistics, geometry, algebra, algebra, excuse me, numbers, and...
Quantitative.
Quantitative statistics. Boy, I said that already. I gotta, that was, I'm telling, I'm being whispered on, I gotta...
That was the area I missed.
Yes. She said that was there, she missed from her notes. So that's actually the whole score, but insert, the nice thing with the math is we can actually break it down even further. The math teacher can say, oh, I have a student that's scoring a 200 in geometry, which is really high, like for example, seventh grade math, but they're really low in algebra, or they're really low in number systems. And so we can then isolate that to the unit that's coming up or a unit at the end of the year, and that's one of the things that is really nice about the test is it actually allows you to see areas where students are struggling or excelling, because they get individual scores in those subcategories, and then it's a culmination score, so that's kind of neat.
Thank you. That's one of the things I'd love to see at a future meeting, is there look to be some areas of isolation, of areas to focus, and I just would love to see from the building principals another time what action items were taken.
Absolutely. Yep.
Any other questions?
Well, I've got four or five years of data on these students now. And so it really allows parents to see how their students are doing in all these subject areas. So I would just kind of emphasize that part of it and then certainly entertain any broad questions.
That was actually my question, if you can tell if a student has taken it seriously or not, meaning how much time that they've taken on it versus just clicking through.
So I would, if we didn't have such a large audience and more things, I would throw that to Mr. Walsh, because that's one of his greatest frustrations. As a building principal for years, I would have teachers come down and say, "These kids don't take it seriously. They did a fifty-question test in eighteen minutes. That's really fast." The nice thing is, you do know, you get the time it takes for a student to take a test, so you have a very good idea whether that result is even valid and shows what the student truly knows. And the other element of that is, as the proctor of the exam, you actually get warnings while your students are taking the test. And if they go too fast, it will actually pause them and the proctor has to come over and enter a proctor code. And there's a sloth that comes up that... Keep cut, am I cutting out?
Yeah.
There's a sloth that comes up and says, "Is it slow down or you're going too fast?" Whatever the term is. So you have that ability to kind of gauge the level of seriousness. The other element that we didn't break down for you is math is actually broken into five aspects, right? You have statistics, geometry, algebra, excuse me, numbers, and
Quantitative.
Quantitative statistics. Boy, I said that already. I gotta, I'm being whispered on, I gotta...
That was the area I missed.
Yes, she said that was the area she missed from her notes. So that's actually the whole score. But insert, the nice thing with the math is we can actually break it down even further. The math teacher can say, "Oh, I have a student that's scoring a two-hundred in geometry," which is really high, like for example, seventh grade math. But they're really low in algebra, or they're really low in number systems. And so we can then isolate that to the unit that's coming up or a unit at the end of the year. And that's one of the things that is really nice about the test is it actually allows you to see areas where students are struggling or excelling. Because they get individual scores in those subcategories, and then it's a culmination score. So that's kind of neat.
Thank you, that's one of the things I'd love to see at a future meeting is there look to be some areas of isolation, of areas to focus. And I just would love to see from the building principals another time what action items were taken.
Absolutely, yep.
Any other questions? Alright, that takes us to item five, personality transfers.
Yes, I'm recommending a transfer for Mr. Jonathan Rice. Mr. Rice has been with us for about five months now. When we had a resignation and Mr. Rice initially had applied for both either social studies or ELA, in interviewing for the open position this fall, excuse me, when the position opened up from this fall, we felt like all the candidates we were interviewing were actually stronger social studies candidates. And so we decided to transfer Mr. Rice back over to English, which was where we feel like he would be a really strong candidate and move a stronger candidate into the eighth grade social studies position, which is coming next on our employment.
Okay, I'll approve superintendent's recommendation for Jonathan Rice from Herman Middle School Social Studies to Herman Middle School ELA teacher.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Oh, not opposed.
Any extensions?
Abstentions, yes, because it's a middle school position.
Thank you.
The employment?
Yep, so I am pleased to recommend Sonya Wedge to four eighth grade social studies HMS teacher. As you know, Ms. Wedge left us for what she perceived to be greener pastures to Old Town this fall. And when this position opened up, she told me that it's not always greener. And I couldn't be more thrilled that I get to make this recommendation. She's just, she is a wonderful educator and very passionate about her students at social studies and has so much experience in her, you know, not only in her teaching profession. She's world-traveled, has served on the Peace Corps, just a wonderful teacher. And so I am pleased to recommend Sonya Wedge for that HMS social studies position. And after talking with Old Town over Christmas vacation, they had somebody to slide her in. So she was actually able to start, I think it was the second day after break. We didn't have to endure the sixty days or thirty days for the position to be filled, which is obviously, that was something we were very concerned about.
I will happily move to approve the superintendent's recommendation to re-employ Sonya Wedge as the Herman Middle School Social Studies teacher.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any extensions?
Motion carries, thank you.
The final employment is for Ms. Barbara Rozell. Ms. Rozell currently, or just recently, is wrapping up employment with RSC nineteen. She has applied for the alternative ed-tech three position for the alternative ed program. And had some wonderful conversations with her. I know she's going to be missed by RSC nineteen, but I think she'll be a very good fit. And we know the importance. I think she certainly has some long-term staying power for that position, which is very, very important in building relationships. And that's what struck me, she seems very passionate about getting into a program where she can build relationships with students who are at risk. So very excited to recommend Ms. Barbara Rozell for the ed-tech position at the alternative ed program.
Motion to approve Barbara Rozell.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries?
See co-extracurricular positions.
Those are four-year information. Some of those are due to some teachers leaving during the middle of the year. And some of them are just being filled as we obviously progress through the year, positions open.
Okay, thank you, takes us to item six, all business A excuses. That is of school committee members, we had those here in the last meeting, so don't have anybody to excuse. Then B policies, A, the second reading of IJJ. And at this time, I will open for public comment.
Good evening again, Brian Venziano, Herman, parent, two kids in school. Start off, it's kind of interesting that we started, the major presentation tonight was about standards and how the school manages grade standards or age standards for our students and how they rate them. Because what we're really talking about with IJJ is standards, age-appropriate standards. And that's where we're going with this. In April of twenty-twenty-two, a concerned citizen challenged a book for its explicit content. The challenge was denied. In the course of the appeal, parents discovered that the Herman School Department does not have any specific standards for explicit content in the selection of instructional and library material. When the school committee denied the book appeal, the motion passed by the school committee was, and I quote, "To deny the appeal and uphold the committee's decision with further discussion at policy committee regarding addressing content and context and coming up with standards to review this as well as other books that are brought to our attention or that we review ourselves," end quote. Parents provided examples of content standards for age-appropriate sexual content that were legally vetted to ensure that they did not have any constitutional conflicts. The examples were also vetted to ensure that the standards addressed content and did not limit context or subject, politically or otherwise. The policy approved in the first reading, in the policy before the committee tonight for final approval, does not include any age-appropriate standards for sexual content, despite parental concerns and with no public opposition until tonight, to establishing age-appropriate standards for sexual content for our schools. As it stands tonight, there are standards issued by the FCC that prevent explicit content from being aired on the radio and on the TV. And parents can block mature and adult content on streaming devices. But minors can view explicit sexual content without parental knowledge in our public school library. Our public schools should be the standard bearer for our community and emulate the highest educational, moral, and social standards. How can a public school demonstrate high moral and social standards while allowing explicit sexual content in our libraries? I invite any educator to explain how explicit sexual content is needed to achieve the main learning results and meet the social and emotional and educational needs of our children. This issue is not limited to one or two books in our school library. After a limited review of the books within the high school library, it has been discovered that more than eighty books contain sexual content. The review process will be further discussed in following comments. Sexually-explicit content has significant impact on our minors. Issues that have yet to be discussed and addressed by this committee. Some of these issues will be outlined by Caroline Delmonico.
Good evening, my name is Caroline Delmonico. I've lived in Herman twenty-two years. I have a child that attends Herman Elementary School. And I've spent most of my career working with children as a licensed social worker. Statistics tell us that one in five girls and one in two boys are victims of child sexual abuse, with children most vulnerable between ages seven to thirteen. According to our most comprehensive report conducted by the American Association of University Women and published by the Department of Education in two thousand and four, nearly ten percent of K through twelve students have been victims of sexual misconduct by a public school employee. To believe it cannot happen and does not happen in main public schools is to be willfully ignorant. Any institution that assumes the responsibility of caring for children is a natural target for adults with ill intentions. These adults with ill intent can use public schools as an avenue to their intended target with explicit materials right at their fingertips to facilitate the exploitation of our most vulnerable citizens, all while being protected by an obscenity exemption statute that Maine law adopted in the seventies. If I were to stand across the street from a public school and hand out some of the materials, these same materials, I would likely be arrested. Children cannot always discern right from wrong, and carefully chosen material can be used by adults to exploit vulnerable children for sexual abuse. Today, we often find our public schools becoming an arm for supplying erotically stimulating content to the immature brains, bodies, and memories of our children, ultimately rewiring their brains, affecting their worldview and how they perceive themselves and others. Students who are exposed to sexually explicit materials have a higher chance of harassing fellow students. And sexual harassment between students has become increasingly prevalent in public schools. Children that are victims of sexual abuse and exploitation carry trauma within their psyche. Viewing sexually explicit content can reawaken their trauma and in essence, re-traumatize them. Easy access to pornography and sexually explicit content is already worrisome and concerning for parents. We are tasked with monitoring our children's access to content that could harm them on a daily basis. But we should never have to be concerned about them accessing this material at school. Neither children or their parents are capable of giving informed consent to the unknown short and long-term effects of premature exposure to sexual stimuli. More importantly, parents are not even given the opportunity to consent to the materials. And there is no age-appropriate content standards to inform parents of the objectionable and even dangerous content to which your children are being exposed. Parents have been unable to protect their children from obscene materials in school by simply opting out, leaving students even more susceptible to exploitation and abuse from other students and adults. The fact is, many American public schools have been hunting grounds for sexual predators. And those of us who are fearful about abuse in schools are not in some kind of moral panic. We're using our intuition to assess a real danger to our children. To set age-appropriate standards on the content we invite in our children's schools is basic. The sexualization of children is a moral crisis in today's society. And they're being sensitized to sex and violence at the hands of adults who are supposed to protect them. Schools should be the one place, if not any other, that children can go to without explicit violent or pornographic content being thrust upon them as education. I will be followed by Josh Henderson, thank you.
Good evening, my name is Josh Henderson. I have been a Herman resident for twenty-two years, and I have two children in the Herman school system. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I would like to provide some information about BookLooks.org. I will refer to it as BookLooks going forward. BookLooks is a group started by parents looking for resource material pertaining to age-appropriate content in books accessible to children in K to twelve schools, both public and private. Every book that has been evaluated by BookLooks was found in a public school library. BookLooks is a nonprofit organization that is not associated or affiliated with any other groups. BookLooks is operated by a diverse group of avid readers. The information they have acquired is free to anyone that wishes to use it. We used BookLooks thorough content reviews, slick sheets, and data to find one book in the Herman Middle School library and over eighty books in the Herman High School library with questionable age-appropriate content. We were not able to execute a complete search of the Herman High School library works and materials. BooksLook's mission is to write detailed and easy-to-understand book content reviews centered around objectionable content, including explicit sexuality, nudity, violence, and profanity. Their goal is to make these reviews available to all parents so they can make informed decisions. BookLooks does not support banning books. Their mission is to inform parents on what is being made available to their children in schools. Parents can use this information to provide the proper guidance to children reading any of these books. As we are tonight, parents can use this information to speak with school committees and school boards to determine what works should be made available to their children while under the care of their schools. BookLooks developed their content-based system to provide a means of assessing the appropriateness of a book for K through twelve children based on the content in the book. Their system is meant to be a guide for parents, teachers, and librarians who want to know what objectionable material is found in a book. When reviewing a book, BookLooks includes a wide variety of potentially controversial content. The rating level given is based on content that has been legally and statutorily categorized as explicit, offensive, or obscene. This mirrors what is done for other media, such as motion pictures, television, and video games. That's the way we have always done it, isn't going to move this school system forward. Our Herman school system and community can achieve something significant for the children of our town if we commit to work out of our comfort zones and implement age-appropriate content standards. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Danielle Hagerty. I am a resident of Herman, a mom of five young adults, and a grandmother. Chairman Keith, committee members, and Mr. Grant, thank you for the opportunity to speak regarding last month's review of the Herman School System's library catalog. This review identified more than eighty books that contain sexual content. I'm going to provide an overview of what we found. In the high school library, we found forty-eight books listed and one book in the Herman Middle School library that contained references to sexual activities. Even though BookLooks.org feels these books warrant an adult content warning, the library catalog system has listed only nine of the forty-eight books as adult or young adult. Thirty-two books listed in the Herman High School library contain explicit sexual nudity and obscene references to sexual activities. Even though BookLooks.org feels these books warrant an adult content warning and are not appropriate for minors, in the library catalog system, only fifteen of the thirty-one books were rated as adult or young adult. Lastly, two books listed in the Herman High School library... I don't know why it's cutting out, sorry. Two books listed in the Herman High School library contain explicit references to aberrant sexual activities. Even though BookLooks.org feels these books warrant an adult content warning and are appropriate for adults only, in the library catalog, one book is rated for age twelve and above, and the other book is rated for age fourteen and above. Again, I want to state that they have aberrant sexual activities in them. If you can turn in your binder, please turn to appendix A, page five. I just want to review the header of the report. There are eighty-two books listed in this report. The way the report is designed, the title is presented, the author, where we located the book, what the book rating is, what the catalog in the Herman School System Library says it is age-appropriate for. And it says, "This book contains," and it gives you the high- says it is age-appropriate for, and it says this book contains, and it gives you the highlights of the content. Lastly, some of them offer slick sheets, which is a condensed version of a book report. In the digital version of this report, which I'd be glad to supply if the committee would like, each title has a link to both the report and also the high school catalog entry. If we go through Sold, we see the title Sold by Patricia McCormick at the High School is rated five in BookLooks, but in our system, it's rated for ages twelve to nineteen with explicit aberrant sexual activities, rape of minors, and prostitution. You may be wondering how we got here. It appears companies selling these books are providing misinformation to schools across the country by implying the content is appropriate for kids as young as twelve years old, and minimizing the nature of the content in the books. To wrap up my comments, I would like to mention what Maine state law says about family life education. State law says comprehensive family life education means education in kindergarten to grade twelve regarding human development and sexuality, including education on family planning and sexually transmitted disease that is medically accurate and age-appropriate, that promotes responsible sexual behavior with an emphasis on abstinence. However, there are multiple books in the high school library available to minors as young as thirteen years old that contain material that is not age-appropriate and do not promote responsible sexual behaviors or abstinence. How is this consistent with Maine law and in the best interest of our children? I am sorry for running over a got-thrown-off-by-the-mic situation. I introduce Derek Wood next.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of this committee, and Mr. Superintendent. My name is Derek Wood, I'm from Herman, Maine. I'm here today to request that you include age-appropriate standards regarding sexual content within the school policy titled Instructional and Library Material Selection. This policy is commonly referred to as Policy Code IJJ. These proposed standards have been provided to the members of the school committee in advance. As you have heard tonight, there is a large disparity or dissimilarity between the current school policy and what an independent book reviewer recommends for age-appropriate content. Regardless of what your thoughts are regarding the reviewer, BookLooks, I think we can all agree that prudent and sensible adults would consider the references of aberrant sexual activities, such as sexual assault or battery, bestiality, or sadomasochistic abuse, is inappropriate for public school-age children. I would also like to add that children under the age of eighteen, while under the responsible supervision of the school system, should not have access to books or materials that contain obscene references to sexual activities involving anal, oral, or vaginal intercourse. This is not about a lifestyle. This is about protecting kids. There are thirty-three books currently in the Herman High School Library that contain one or multiple references I just mentioned, and that is very concerning. If the Herman School Committee is not willing to vote for the inclusion of age-appropriate standards for sexual content tonight, I'm respectfully requesting that common ground be allowed to prevail to discuss the implementation of a very robust and cohesive policy that protects all children. One way common ground can be established is to make a motion to send this back to the sub-policy committee. After it is sent back to the subcommittee, an ad hoc committee can be assembled to establish a channel for communication that would allow both parties to outline their positions as well as express their concerns, their fears, their expectations, and ambitions. I do believe that the Herman School Committee and the community of Herman can find common ground that promotes collaboration, a respectful approach to adopt a reasonable solution. However, that requires dialogue, and that dialogue that facilitates... we need dialogue that facilitates an inclusive, discreet approach to establish middle ground. Common ground is the act of problem-solving, and middle ground is compromise. Common ground is needed to establish the middle ground. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Amy Oliver Stubbs. I was born and raised here in Herman, and I'm currently raising my two children here. Both of them attend Herman Schools. I'm quite confident that I speak for many of us here when I say that I find the current state of our community upsetting. It is no secret that we have experienced some difficult times in recent months, much of which has been caused by mere misunderstandings. However, I am optimistic that together we can overcome this. First, I would like to address our teachers. With the utmost sincerity, I want to say that I'm sorry that some of you have been personally attacked. Whether it were publicly or privately, personal attacks on teachers should never be condoned without exception. Please know that the actions of those individuals are not supported by us and that they are in no way tied to the efforts we are making here tonight. I've spoken to many parents in our community, and in doing so have confirmed my belief that majority of parents in town appreciate and respect our teachers. No one is blaming staff for the books that have been found in our library catalogs throughout our research. Instead, we are suggesting that the system we have used for choosing books has become outdated. That said, we strongly believe that implementing age-appropriate sexual content standards will benefit the administration, teachers, and students of our district. I want to thank parents who have either spoken out or reached out to us regarding your concerns, excuse me, about books available to our children in school. Some of you have worked incredibly hard to advocate for our kids. The goal of implementing age-appropriate standards for books within our three libraries in order to protect children from unnecessary and potentially damaging sexual content is an honorable one. I am proud that people have stepped up and used their voices to become involved in implementing change for a system that needs revising. Tonight, parents in Alaska, Arizona, Colorado, Missouri, Oklahoma, New Jersey, and Rhode Island are not facing the same battle we are here in Herman, Maine. The challenge of appealing to our school committee to remove material containing inappropriate sexual content from our children's schools. This is because Maine has obscenity exemption statutes, which allow dissemination of these types of materials in a school setting. If any individual were to disperse some of these materials to children outside of school walls, they would likely be arrested, and depending on the material, they may need to register as a sex offender. Sexualized content that falls short of being prohibited by criminal law is nonetheless inappropriate and unnecessary for minors in our schools. Herman School Committee members, we ask that you prioritize the inclusion of quality, age-appropriate materials in our schools that does not contain sexual content. Will you take this opportunity tonight to do the right thing? Will you choose to protect our children by including age-appropriate standards? Thank you.
Holly Williams Levant. I have a fifteen-year-old son, who is a sophomore here at Herman High. I'm also a public library librarian and a volunteer crisis counselor for LGBTQ+ youth. On the surface, a rating system sounds good, good thing. You don't want a first grader reading about something very violent, although it appears violence doesn't seem to matter with this group, just sex. So, okay, maybe you don't want descriptions of sex before you, as a parent, has had the talk with your child, and that's saying that you actually do have that conversation with your children, because not all do. There are too many different life experiences and maturity levels, like I believe Ms. Stewart had mentioned, to make general rules or ratings. I keep hearing it's not about banning books, but keeping our children safe. It is about banning books. Removing access is censorship. These books are not dangerous. Removing them may make you feel better and think your children are now safe from these ideas. By the way, I'm wondering if the Bible is on that list that you have there. There's plenty of sex in the Bible. And a quote from Ellen Hopkins, who's author of some teen fiction, which I believe probably one of her books is on your list. "Word to the unwise: torch every book, char every page, burn every word to ash. Ideas are incumbustible, and therein lies your real fear." Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Briar Chapin. I am a sophomore here at Horton High School, and I frequent the library quite a bit, actually. I spend every study hall I can in there. I read when I can, and I have to thank librarians for sort of reigniting my passion for books. Personally, I think that this assault on literature and on knowledge is absolutely deplorable. I don't see any real issue with these books, because, fun fact, sex happens. Sex happens with high schoolers, with adults, and I can say with utmost certainty that most of us in this room came about through sexual activities. I think that limiting the access to books with sexual content in it is kind of stupid, honestly. Without knowledge, how are we supposed to learn? How are we supposed to better ourselves as a people, as a community, as a nation? And I am, of course, winging this, so I'm going to keep this short, but the one question that I have is why? Why are we attacking books? Why are we attacking knowledge? And also, what are those eighty-plus books, and where can I get that list? Because I'm honestly curious. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just going to set this down. I have no idea how to put this back on.
I'm Scott Helmke. I'm a resident of Herman. One of the most important books I have read is Know My Name, a memoir by Chanel Miller. This book would be a fantastic read for students preparing to enter the adult world. It touches on the strengths and failings of our criminal justice system and the role wealth plays in that system. It includes lessons on consent and on the risks of substance use. It shows the importance of bystanders stepping up and doing something rather than deciding it's not their problem. The author discusses overcoming trauma and how she chose to not let that trauma define her life. It provided me with the perspective that has helped me better empathize with and support the women in my life. And that book contains a description of the sexual assault of the author and the clinical examination of her vagina that followed. There is absolutely nothing purient or arousing about the sexual content of this book, yet it would certainly be banned under this proposed policy. I don't know if the Herman High School Library has this book. If they don't, I'd recommend that they acquire it. The person who committed the rape in the book was nineteen years old when he did it. High school students are not far removed from being in an environment where they are confronted with a situation similar to what happened to the author, or, and I hope this is not the case, they may have already experienced it. And if this book makes one person reconsider making a terrible decision, or makes one person decide not to be a passive bystander when they see something not okay happening, or helps one person move forward from an awful event, I think that outweighs the harm of a student maybe reading the word vagina when their parents don't want them to. If a student had been opted out of any lessons that discuss sex, and if they're not allowed to check out books that their parents don't want them to, and because these are great parents, I'm sure the parents have had the discussion, you know, "I don't want you reading these books in your study hall," and the students still do take a peek at those books in the library, well, that's a parenting problem. That's not a school problem, because they're still seeking out that content, and they're going to find a way to access it. It's 2022. If it's not in the library, they have friends with phones, they have any number of ways to access that content. I'll finish by saying that we trust the professionals who teach at our schools to decide which math concepts are appropriate for which ages, what order science concepts should be taught and based on their complexity, and what literature to teach in the different levels of English classes. I'm not sure why we shouldn't give the same level of deference to those professionals to determine what books are appropriate for a high school library. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Alan Dwelly, President of Herman. Last spring, this town experienced an awakening of sorts, which spurred a group of concerned citizens to become more involved in the workings of the school, and what they've learned has left them in somewhat of a state of disbelief. The school committee had, and in my estimation continues to have, an attitude that they do not support meaningful public comment. The board has reluctantly allowed public comment at subcommittee meetings where those voices might have a chance at actually affecting school policy. But the board has really only given this lip service to this idea and to their voices. In fact, the superintendent and the board have not had the decency to reply to concerns submitted by taxpaying constituents, something I have personally experienced, and this illustrates a disregard and a disrespect for those concerns. The board's recent decisions have shown that public voices carry no weight to effect meaningful change within the school. I speak in particular about the board's decision regarding the IJJ policy. The public has been asking for a common sense policy, an age-appropriate rating system with parental opt-in guidelines regarding sexual content in library and curriculum books. The board, at the last meeting, voted down such a policy. Thus, people feel like they are not being heard. The one thing the school must do, in addition to teaching our children, is to protect and provide a safe environment in which they can learn. Sexualizing our children at young ages in no way meets that standard. I've heard other speakers talk about censorship, First Amendment rights, and banning books, but having a rating system and having age-appropriate restrictions is not asking for books to be banned. It is entirely appropriate to develop a rating system with parental opt-in guidelines for certain books, and it also supports parental rights. Parents and grandparents are advocating for a common sense policy with age-appropriate restrictions regarding sexual content and are thus far being dismissed. These concerned citizens are not asking for the world, and we're not asking for books to be banned, just a common sense policy. Two members of the board had the courage to vote in favor of such a policy, and I thank you both. The rest, your report card is still outstanding, and there's room for improvement. I'm asking the superintendent and the board to do your jobs and to protect our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any papers to read. I just found out about this meeting today. I just moved here, and I've been in Herman, Maine for one year, and I have a granddaughter that I'm raising that goes to Herman Junior High School, and I've been so thrilled with the school, with the teachers, the Christmas holiday. When Sunday came, she could hardly wait to go to school to see her teachers and her friends. But when I heard the news of what was going on today... I'm from Tucson, Arizona. And when I heard today what was being discussed, I was a little appalled, because I was raised as parents, that we do have a say-so in some of this, of how our kids are raised. I buy their groceries, I put a roof over their head, I buy their clothes, and when other parents want to teach their kids, that's fine, I'm not against it. But to know that I have to vigilantly watch my granddaughter, who has come from such a crisis as a child, when I got her at four and a half, it hurt me to find out that she could go into a room and find things, books to read. And I want you to know, I'm a little disturbed. I've never heard of something like this. And I'm just saying, as parents, to give us a choice. That's what America's always been. I've already raised a family of three children. I have a son that is a vice principal in Visalia, California, who speaks fluent Spanish, and I'm on my second round of raising another child, and I've never heard of this, of not allowing us, as parents, to have some kind of a say in our own children. And this scares me. This scares me, and I just think we really, really need to think about this, because I want my daughter, my granddaughter, to enjoy school and to know that if she goes to school, she can pick up any book she wants, and I'm not worried about what she reads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. I am Mina Bowers. I'm from Carmel. I'm a student at Herman High. Personally, looking at a lot of the books on that list, I see myself as the sort of values that are being fought against here. To me... To me, it feels like parents in this community have sort of sought to attack children in the school because their parents didn't share the same beliefs as them. I am a child of God myself, I have strong morals. I am the eldest sister of four siblings in elementary, middle, and high school. The fact that a lot of the things presented in these books is seen as morally despicable and that a lot of it are parts of my identity is saddening. My mother has always fought for the freedom of information to provide us with whatever information we would need, no matter how old we are. And I believe that has made my mother's children excel in life. I am an honors student, I take part in lots of extracurriculars. My siblings are all just the same. We don't... Access to this information is not going to turn us into some monster. Many of the friends I have within this school have experienced things within these books, sexual violence. And almost all of them find comfort in these books, not some form of terror. To them, it makes them feel like their experiences are valid and that they're not imagining things. I think that this restriction on books, rating system, truly takes away control from other parents as well, like mine. She believes that everyone should be able to access things if their parents feel they are mature enough. And I think taking these things outside of the school, these are not things that we're actively going to search for. So seeing them in an environment like this allows it to introduce them to us. One of the books on that list is Speak by Lori Hall Sanderson, which is used as teaching resource across many schools. And the fact that we're taking something that's used for awareness and teaching and proposing to not allow kids to read it is awful. That's it.
Thank you.
My name is Matthew Dawes, I'm a resident of Herman and a junior in this very school. As a student of Herman High, I firmly believe that this is... The school's faculty is made up of reputable and respectable people. Saying this, once again, as a student, I say that the portrayals in these books can be interpreted depending upon maturity. In the broadest of terms, people interpret information differently. In seventh grade, I was read a short novel about trauma, PTSD, and how a person my age, the middle school bracket, dealt with this trauma. I see books about trauma as not only a learning experience, but one that brings a sense of clarity to children. I know it did to me. And to those who have gone through trauma, these books can be triggered and can trigger that trauma or can bring a sense of comfort to them, as my fellow student just said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Megan Leonard-Gonya, I am a resident of Herman, I grew up in Levant. And when I knew I was gonna choose where I wanted to live and raise my children, I chose Herman. I'm a graduate of this very high school. I would also like to commend the kids who stood up here and talked because I'm terrified of public speaking, so bear with me. I'm also gonna move this down, so hopefully it stops coming in and out. While I'm all for age-appropriate content... To revoke? To revoke? Like, maybe if I stand over here? To revoke or ban books based on subjectable criteria is the equivalent of burying your head in the sand. The two main arguments that are flawed, although there are additionally many others that are flawed, but for the sake of time, let's stick to these two. In reading the proposed restrictions, one of the things that's mentioned is female breasts. When I was in elementary school, we learned about African cultures, where women wore grass skirts and were topless. So are we gonna say that our children can't learn about other cultures? Let's talk about penises. Is it only erect penises that we want to ban? Because if we're talking about flaccid penises, there are many works of famous art. Statue of David, which I also looked at in middle school, and Tee Heed with my girlfriends in the corner because we saw a penis. Let's look at the Sistine Chapel, that's where the Pope lives, there's also penises on the ceiling there. And it was mentioned earlier tonight, the mid-question is, do kids not have access to the internet? What do they watch on TV? There are parental controls for that, but to what extent? Children certainly have found ways around that in the past and they will continue to do so. They will get access to whatever information that they would like to get access to. And we're talking about, this is things that they've seen on the internet, it's in movies, TV shows, advertisements, magazines in the grocery store aisle, even on bumper stickers. So as much as we would love to slap a parental sticker on the entire world, we just can't. And it was mentioned earlier tonight, we're okay with banning sex, but not about gore or horror. A lot of people have talked about the movie and TV ratings. Did you know that in 2022, Netflix's most streamed show was Stranger Things? It has a TV fourteen, so if you're not over fourteen, you're not supposed to watch it. The number of eight, nine, and ten-year-olds that I know that that's their favorite show, yes, their parents are saying that they can watch that, but why are we okay with showing gore and fear and not sex? Another thing that we do, that we're totally okay with, is putting weapons into the hands of young children. Weapons have the power and capacity to kill another human being, and we're totally okay with it. We encourage them, we celebrate them when they kill a deer, a bird, a moose. They smear the blood on their kill of their first face, I'm almost on promise. Kids play video games where they kill other players, we buy them toy guns to play cops and robbers and kill the bad guy. I'm not talking about guns to distract from the original topic, I am a gun-carrying citizen myself, but really, I'm doing it to draw a parallel. We're okay with giving guns to children to teach them gun safety, how to protect themselves and to not fear guns, but we willingly teach them violence and death, but we won't teach them or guide them or educate them on sex and how to protect themselves there, when in the end result could very well bring a life into this world rather than taking one out. How does that make any sense? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this agenda? Okay. I'll take a motion.
I'm going to approve the second reading of the policy IJJ.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
Yes. I think after hearing both sides, and the content standards were not added, this has gone back to subcommittee twice and been brought forward, parents have been sharing for over six months their concerns, I would like to make a motion to adopt the content standards that Daniel Hegery and other constituents have brought forward for all three schools. Can we start here in Herman?
Just for clarification, that's an amendment to motion, right?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Okay, that amendment does not care, so go back to discussion on the main motion.
So I would make a motion to send IJJ to an ad hoc committee that can consist of the entire school board, the librarians, curriculum coordinator, a teacher from each school, and the parents who've been actively involved in offering solutions.
Is that an amendment to the motion?
Yes.
Do it again.
The motion's just deleted, so I'm making a motion to amend the policy or to send it back. So I'm ready again.
Well, are you amending, there's a real motion on the table. Kristen made a motion and there was a second, so are you amending that motion?
I'm amending the motion to send this back to IJJ to create a ad hoc committee.
Okay, do we have a second?
It's my understanding that we already have a policy and procedure in place that if a book wants to be challenged, that we could... An ad hoc committee could be formed at that time.
Yeah, just before we get into discussion, we need to have a second before we get involved in the discussion on this motion. Okay, so that motion does not care, we go back to the main motion and open back to discussion on that main motion.
So the discussion on the main motion is... It's been six months, parents have been sharing their concerns, this has been back to subcommittee twice, it's come forward again without any sort of content standard, which the community is very clearly asking for, even though those in opposition have shared that they understand some content standards may be acceptable. The parents and taxpayers are sharing their concerns. Books have been challenged, you do not remove them. I have been part of trainings that train us, as board members, how to fight parents on book challenges and how to survive and win those. So for you guys to sit here and say that there's another option, that books can be challenged... I myself have challenged books, they were not removed.
You've challenged one book.
Yep. Was that book removed?
But I'm hearing you say plural.
Okay. I have challenged the same book twice. None of the committee, and the vote was to support the committee's decision, and their book report, it's not just yea or nay. They... There was a process that was carried out by the committee, similar to ad hoc, which did add staff, librarians, also public. A parent was on that committee, and that was the decision for that particular book. I am putting forward this motion because I trust the administration, the teachers, to do their job to implement the current policy that is in place and that it will surface. And I want everyone to know, who may be new here tonight, that I have spent hours on this policy. And it's not that I haven't listened, I have listened. And I am happy that we have people that came out tonight on the other side because there is a small group that has been louder and been here more often. But I can tell you that I have listened to all community members, staff, and people here tonight. And I hear you, and I have tried to compromise on some things. But tonight, my motion is to move to approve this second reading of IJJ.
Mr. Graham, I know you've been in many discussions with this sub-policy, do you have any recommendations?
Yeah. My primary concern as a superintendent is parental choice. I believe that parents ought to be involved. I think it's their responsibility, and when I say parents, I mean parents and guardians, I believe it is their primary responsibility to be involved in their child's education. And that's gonna look different in how they parent their kids and how they guide them through school. And I think the most important thing we as a district can do, and I think, to be frank, I think it's being overlooked in the second reading of this policy, is that we have explicitly stated that parents have the right to opt their child out of anything, whether it is a book, whether it is curriculum, that they do not feel alliance with their values system. And furthermore, one of the things that we are developing is a list with the librarian where... Because we also believe that sometimes parents just don't know. And shame on them, because it is their responsibility to know. But we want to take them a step further and develop a list of content that might be questionable by interest. So for example, they can... We're gonna develop a category that they can go through our website. And they can see books that have sexual content, they can see books that have violent content, because I think that's also important to parents, even though it's not really being talked about a lot tonight. Books that potentially have illicit drug use, books that have language. Perhaps it's books on mysticism, perhaps it's books on different religions, they don't want their children to read about whatever it might be. And that way, parents can be educated about what is in our public school library and ultimately have that conversation with their child. But I believe that it's short-sighted to say that we're not doing anything, we're adopting a policy that allows for parents to make that decision, and we're gonna try to educate them as to what we have. So my recommendation is to move forward with the second reading of IJJ.
Thank you.
So I'm just trying to understand how books that have people having sex with animals meets the main learning standard. Where is the... Like, where... How does that meet the main learning standard? Can someone better inform me? Or why that would be appropriate, I'm just trying... I'm not sure.
What book is that referenced to?
Maybe this Trix, which is not in our library. It's not in our library.
It is not in our library. It is lost and not in our library.
It's lost.
We just hold the comments from the public, please. Thank you. Any other discussion?
I was just curious what the exact definition was of alternate sexualities within the packet of the sexual content review.
That wasn't something we provided, so we don't have a definition for that.
So I just want to make the community aware. So I have a trained... I've taken classes through lawyers and NSNA that says how to survive a book challenge. The American Library Association puts out on their website strategies to win book challenges. Websites they provide how to fight censorship. One of the statements they have here, it says, during their week of celebration of... Sorry, ALA Host's banned book week for staff and citizens. During their celebration, in the majority of cases, the books always remain available. And then they offer ideas for educators, ideas to expose kids to books that have been challenged by providing presentations of all books that have been challenged, creating bulletin boards of why they were challenged and providing the content. I myself have sat through a training with a librarian who provides an end-of-the-year presentation of all the books that were challenged and why to the eighth-grade class. Not in our school, but my point is, is that this is very material that parents are trying to protect their children from, and educators are going and providing this or recommending that. It's a slap in the face to parents.
How does this apply to what we're discussing right now?
Because this has been brought forward to have content standards provided to hear the parents and constituents of our town, that has not been done. And I'm asking for us to reconsider an ad hoc committee to involve and include parents. At that, one of the first meetings, you didn't even allow people to participate. Can I make a motion again, Jesse, and I'll appeal seconded, but can I make a motion again?
It can't be the same motion. You can make an amended motion, but it can't be the same one that we already, we've got.
I'll make a motion to create an ad hoc committee to define and create content standards for policy IJJ that can comprise of teachers, librarians, the full school board, and select parents.
Is that, is that different than the motion that you had?
It's similar, I think I left out, I left out teachers.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, we'll go back to the discussion on the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? It's great.
So, I would just like to say, LA banning these books isn't going to change what we think it's going to. The children that are taking out these books for inappropriate reasons, we should be changing their character. So, a reading is a way for children to grow, learn, and adapt. These children may be taking out these books for reasons that they need help with. Banning these books are causing more pain to these children. The students signing up these books aren't searching for these books because of the inappropriate content they heard. They want these books for the story. The children that we think are signing up these books because of the inappropriate content are most likely looking this up online or partaking in such activities. And the folks representing the LGBTQ community are most likely comforting students within this community. Here at Herman, we accept and support everyone. Banning these books is not helping anyone.
If you didn't ask, the whole of the class, thank you. All right, any other discussion?
I just want to clarify that the policy that was brought forward in no way, shape, or form targets a certain group of people. This is just a content standard that defines sexual explosive content, so.
Any other discussion?
We, I know that a group of people are not happy with opt-out, and you want opt-in. But at this time, with moving with IJJ, we have the opt-out and also the ability for parents to say you don't want your child to be in the library. You could do that if that was something you wanted them, if you didn't trust that they had access. You could say that, and we have a new e-hall pass system that could block them from going to the library. So, that is a new electronic system that has been established here at high school to keep children from meeting up in the bathroom to bath. So, we can use it for other things. And we can also use it to keep track of children who are missing class for longer than short periods of time to use the bathroom. So, I think that there are other things in place that we already have. And IJJ is going to be able to, to move forward and protect this, protect the children, but also to keep the opportunity there for those that want it and for each parent to have their own voice on what they want for their child.
So, Krista, can I ask a question? Based on what you said, parents have the option to opt out, so all of those, so your student doesn't get to go to the library at all. So, they have no ability to learn other things from books because we can't protect them from a few.
Well, you could opt to have them protected from a few if you fill out the opt-out form and list which books you don't want them to have access to as a parent. That is a system that's in place.
And librarians already have many things to do, most are tackling multiple roles other than being a librarian.
It doesn't depend on their memory, it's electronic.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor? All opposed? That motion carries?
Were you opposed or for it?
I'm for it.
Oh, for it.
All right, that takes us to items seven in business. We'll open, this is a first reading of our policies. I'll open this for public comment.
I'm in favor of the first reading of policy GBN Family Medical Evac.
Why do I make that there for once?
Seconded on that policy.
Any discussion? Mr. Graham, can you just give us a quick rundown of what's, what's changing?
The GBN, yeah. So, if you look at GBN Family Medical Evac, I think the easiest way to explain is just to direct you to uncomplimenting the FMLA. And they do a nice job of breaking down what we did. They did a nice job of breaking down what we currently have on the books and what you folks have on your books for a GBN, GBN-R1 and GBN-R2. And there were some recent changes in August by the Maine State Legislature. One of those, one of the major changes was to the eligibility requirements of 900 hours over 12 months. And initially, under federal medical evac, it was 1,250 hours over 12 months. So, we call it mini-mane. And what they had done with Drummond and Woodsen is put forward a sample policy that combines GBN, GBN-R, GBN-R1, and GBN-R2. And so, basically, it just works, walks through that new eligibility requirements. It combines the policies. And so, we would be, you'd be voting, excuse me, on GBN, which would adopt this new language, which we currently are putting into practice. We just want our policies to catch up, obviously, with what the law is. Couple of things that we hadn't quite settled on at the subcommittee meeting. And I would just direct your attention to page 204. In red, rolling year, we would like to do a rolling year instead of working one full year and then being eligible for FMLA in, you know, at the start of year two. We believe, obviously, an employee has been with us for eight or nine months, has met that qualification of 900 hours. We don't feel like they should have to wait for the calendar year of year two to tick off to then be eligible. We think it should be a rolling year from their, their date of hire. And then the other element that we do not have completely settled in the policy committee was, I wasn't sure all the time that we did or didn't offer. So, on the bottom of page three, you'll see two things struck through in red, compensatory time and disability leave. And those two things are not things that we have. We do have unpaid leave, we have sick leave, we have vacation. We obviously allow for absence of non-related injuries. So, we did strike those two. So, those are just two minor changes that I didn't have answers to. Excuse me, last two, midnight, subcommittee.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, motion carries? Next one is BICA School Calendar.
School calendar? What you have here is you just have a little bit more explicit language in respect to how many days are required by law, both for students and then in the calendar. We obviously have more than 180 days. We also talk a little bit in this policy that you don't have in your current policy. We have, we have scratched, well, what we do, excuse me. So, we took out teacher orientation days, we don't do teacher orientation.
Yeah, I just, I, this is my, we got to take a, a motion first before discussion. No, sorry.
I make the motion to, what are we, we're doing reverse reading? To approve the first reading of this, of the policy regarding school calendar, I see.
Seconded.
Mr. Graham, I could just ask you, I apologize, if we just start over?
Sure. Okay, so, what we've done with this is, in this current policy compared to your '07 version, you just had a timeframe, you had no later than the regular reading of March. We like the sample policy because it shows how many days you have to have. It also talks about the different, how the collective bargaining unit might impact the total number of days. It can't drop it below the minimum, but for example, we have more than 180 days when you include service days. So, we have 175 staff days and eight insurgent days, or excuse me, professional staff days for 183. And obviously, it states that those can be approved in accordance with the CBA. And then finally, the superintendent, one of the things I liked about this is that in preparing for the proposed calendar for the spring, the calendar's going to indicate a variety of days and types of days. So, days that school is in session, days that we have for holiday and vacation, and professional development days, some of those parent-teacher conferences. One thing that we would not include, we do not do teacher orientation days anymore. Those are done during the summer at the building levels, at the individual building levels. Our first two or three insurgent days that we have aren't for orientation. They are for professional development, teacher prep time, freshman orientation, you know, whatever, whatever it might be. So, we did strike that.
Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion can, carries? C I H B F Homebound Instruction.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind the policy I H B F Homebound Instruction as it is outdated and no longer valid.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
So, as I explained in the policy committee meeting, and one of the things that when we, when we're reviewing homebound instruction, like Mr. Shore said, this is an outdated policy. If we have a student that became medically incapacitated, could not attend school, we would address that lack of attendance through a 504 plan. The days of us sending a teacher to a hospital or to a home to accommodate that student, those, those do not exist. We would go through the special education process and the accommodation process of 504 plan. So, this, this is just outdated, as you can see, from '73. But I would hate for some parents to point to this and say, oh, you'll provide me instruction at home or in the hospital. No, you need to go through the 504 process and get eligibility, have a team meeting, and so on and so forth. So, we believe, obviously, that this is outdated because it's trumped by the 504 plan.
Any discussion? All those in favor? That motion carries? Takes us to B, 2023, 24, HHS New Course Proposals. And we'll start with, we'll open up the public comment at this time. Okay, we'll close public comment. I would like to invite Mr. Walsh at this time to come forward to speak to the HHS New Course Proposals.
Hey, good evening. I am Mr. Walsh, principal of high school. In front of you, you have six new courses to consider for next year. I can either go through each, I don't know if you have time, if you've read through those, but I'd be happy to give you the short version of each of those. Just reminding you, just because a course is approved and it goes into our program of studies does not necessarily mean we run that course. It has to do with how many students sign up for a course, does it work in the schedule, and how does it complement those other courses? So, tonight, if you do approve these courses and we don't have one of these next year, please don't say, why don't we have it? You can certainly talk to me, I can let you know. But if these are approved tonight, they become options for our students. So, the first one in your package is called Movement for the Stage. The teacher who proposed it did not want to call it Dance, but that's what this would be, if you had a chance to take a look at that. For those of you who attended the fall production this year, thank goodness, we're back and we're in business and we're back to our musicals. We have not run the show choir class in a number of years, but I have a strong suspicion we will have great interest in that class for next year. And this course, Movement for the Stage, would complement that very nicely. This would give kids not only an opportunity for learning about how to dance and where placement is and blocking and so forth. It would certainly enhance our fall production. It would definitely enhance our show choir as well as our spring production. So, I don't know if there are any questions about the Movement for Stage, but that is the first class that's being proposed tonight. Any questions on Dance? Okay? The second one in front of you, for those of you who are returning on the board, this course was proposed last year as well. This is Genocide Today. This would be a 20th and 21st century history elective. You may recall, over the last few years, we've gone to an à la carte with social studies. So, after the world of his people as ninth graders, our students have a plethora of options and opportunities for courses to take. This course would look at genocide in the 20th and 21st century. The teacher who proposed this course has done a ton of work on the history of Asia. And you'll see specifically in that, one of the things, of course, we'll look at is two ongoing denicides, both in Asia and China and Burma. And it gives our kids, again, an opportunity to look at 20th and 21st century social studies. Any questions on that course that's in front of you? Okay? The next course is Advanced Guitar. If you get a chance to come by fourth period on a Gold Day, you will see a full class for guitar. Mr. Zabrick has done a fantastic job. He is our music teacher. And we've had a number of students ask, is there another level of guitar that I can take? So, he is looking at the student's interest level. He has a phenomenal expertise in the guitar himself. And this would essentially be a second level of guitar class that students could take. Again, just because you approve it doesn't mean that we would run it, but this would give our kids kind of the next level. I'm really looking forward to a concert where we have not only steel pans in our symphonic band, but also the guitar kids, I think it'd be fantastic. And so, this would again be the next level, if you will, with guitar. Any questions on Advanced Guitar?
So, is that, I have one thought.
Sure.
So, is it estimated, is that 2,000?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Guitar, the estimated cost is, I think, 2,000?
Correct, so currently, we have enough guitars for one class. And we have a number of students who then actually, after the class, buy their own and purchase their own guitars. And we want to make sure we have enough funds so that if a student wants to continue. If we had a second section, most of those students will probably purchase their own. We want to make sure if we run a course that we have enough funds if we have to go and purchase more student insurance.
Okay, and I'm new to the school, it was last fall, so is that stuff that they leave here, the guitars they leave here? When in the process do they take them home?
They, they have the option, they can leave them here, they can take them home. When it's Gold Day, you see at least 10 kids or 15 kids bringing in the guitar. The idea is to take them home and hopefully practice.
Yeah.
But they're student model guitars, they've held up very well over the last three or four years. The idea would then be, again, to supplement if indeed we have the student interest. Steel pans do not leave the building, but the guitars do. Good question. All right, the next two courses that are up for discussion. We have Career Exploration, and then we have Workplace Readiness. And for those of you, I mean, you all know our mission of the high school is to prepare our students for success in college, career, and the community. And one of the areas our NAAS accreditation has focused on, and I think we got a little derailed after 2019 and 2020. One of the things we focused on was having our kids ready for career exploration and workplace readiness. And so, those two courses would work very well together. You know, some of you know my vision is to have work, job shadows, work studies, co-ops, and have our kids have real-world experiences. The idea is to build a relationship with the businesses and our greater Herman communities and allow our kids to start that interest. These two courses would work hand in hand, we believe, in helping our students do that. We do have, we are very fortunate, we have a career prep instructor. That certification has gone away with the DOE in recent years. But we're looking at transitioning that expert from the business side to the career side. And we think she would be a fantastic instructor in this. If this is approved, our hope is we start off and see how many students are interested. I can see myself coming back here in a year or two and saying, okay, we want to add a requirement of our students where they take career explorations. We can't force them to go get. We can't force them to go get work study or, or so forth, but our hope would be we add career explorations, um, as an elective, and then students take it even further from there. Um, so I'm really excited about, not that I'm not excited about the other courses, but I'm really excited about those two. Any questions on either of those, career exploration or workplace readiness?
So this doesn't mean they'll leave you staff, or does it mean, no?
No, we are, we are being creative. Um, prior to COVID, I really was hoping to look at and hire a career counselor. Um, 23 years ago, I worked in a school that had a career center, and it was fantastic. Um, the reality is we'd be using a position that we have now to fund it. And so there wouldn't, from a, from a staffing standpoint, there wouldn't be an additional cost. Another good question. Um, and then the last one in your packet is the rhetoric of film, and the English department has done something that the social studies department is already doing successfully, and that is looking at adding electives that students are interested in. Um, our sports journalism, which you approved last year, we have two full sections, um, and they're doing a fantastic job. And there's an interest in looking at the rhetoric of film and giving our students an opportunity to have yet another elective and experience for our juniors and seniors, um, through that interest in that medium. Any questions on that? Okay. Thanks for your time.
Yeah.
Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve the, uh, five or six new high school courses.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Hi, can I add something? The question, no new staff for that one position or for the two positions. Uh, I think Mr. Walsh and I, our vision would be someday that'd be such a popular and well-established course that we would bring on a career counselor slash work site monitor where we had hundreds of kids out doing job shadows and working with and partnering with other businesses. So I just want to put that out there. That's not what we'll be asking for this year, but someday we would like to see that program grow to that point, and I can see that at a position at some point, uh, but it's not this year. So I just wanna put the landing groundwork for that for the future. Any other discussion?
All those in favor? My motion carries.
See substitute pay. With the start of the new year, we no longer pay minimum wage for subbing. Good motivation to come in and sub. Um, currently on a seven-hour day, the, uh, our subs are just under minimum wage. You would need to bring the salary for subbing to $96 and I believe it's $0.80. Uh, currently, we pay $90 for people who are fingerprint certified, and we pay $95 for people who have either an ed tech or teacher certification or some type of professional certification, OTPT, you know, whatever it might be. I am requesting that you increase the sub rate from $90 to $100 for just the fingerprinting certification people, and you raise it from 95 to 105 for people who have a teacher certification. So $10 increases in, for both categories of people, but essentially $100 and $105 versus 90 and 95. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve an increase in subsidy to meet the minimum wage, which would be $100 a day for regular subs and $105 for certain.
Seconded.
Any discussion?
The only question that I have is what, and you might not know this, but what's the impact to the budget approximately on that?
It is a very hard thing to figure what that impact would be, right? Because will somebody run on, on long term? Will somebody, you know, will we have an uptick in sickness? Um, we don't believe that will negatively impact the budget because we usually overbudget for subpay, especially at the point in the last two years. So we think between the, um, the little bit of cushion that we budgeted, given the fact that we're starting in January, not the start of the year, we feel like we can absorb a $10 increase based upon the little bit of buffer that we put in.
Thank you.
And I remember when we talked about this, the last time we increased it, we were looking at area schools and we were lower than some, and some were even, I think, higher than this.
Yeah. I don't know what all the other districts are going to do, obviously, as a result of the wage increase as well. Um, I believe we were fourth in the region of, I looked at six schools a few months ago, um, you know, and, uh, I apologize, I don't have that right in front of me, but we were kind of mid, mid-pack when I looked at six or seven schools, called up their business offices in the past. So, uh, I don't know what it'll do this morning. I don't know what they'll do, but I certainly feel like we should at least be offering minimum wage for our subs.
Just for clarity, is the 100 and 105 at minimum wage, or does that exceed the minimum wage?
It exceeds the minimum wage by $3.20. I believe to get to minimum wage, you would need to go to 96 to 80.
Okay. To, was the intent of the motion to be at minimum wage, or was it to be at the 100 and 105?
I think the motion, I believe you said 100 and 105.
Oh, 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 I see.
Be at the minimum wage.
I was thinking it was because, I was thinking that, we were showing that true. I should read.
Depending on, depending on what you'd like to do, you either rescind the second or rescind the motion, maybe the motion or you have to give the motion.
I can, I would like, I'll amend it. I move to approve an increase to $100 a day and $105 for those that come in with certain issue.
Do we have a second?
Seconded, yeah.
Any discussion of that?
Thank you for clarifying, Jesse.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Any objections? You just clarify why you're standing?
Um, because it's, um, your substitutes, and it's substitute pay.
Okay, that takes us to eight reports, administrative reports.
I'm looking for mine, is there a bag? Sorry. So I'm gonna steal a little bit of this in the young blood. It's Jamie here. Hi, Jamie. If you want to just give her like a little bit of a salute and/or a wink, um, really excited to announce the tuition rate. She put it in her report as well. Uh, she, obviously, and what she and I did this spring, um, she had a really, uh, really good plan to spend money where we were supposed to spend money out of appropriate lines to increase our tuition rate. And I made no small, you know, bones and frustrations at the town council meeting and in our budget meetings about how it's, it's just a really sad thing to see Herman with one of the lowest tuition rates in the state at 80, I think it was 84 and change or 85 and change. And we got our tuition rate back on December 21st. You should have seen Mr. Walsh when we told him, thought he was gonna drop dead, heart attack. But our tuition rate went up to 9947, which is a $1,400 increase. I'm sorry, R C 87 for that, um, but that's something that is, it's a retroactive billing, so it impacts us right now. And so that's increased money, and when you figure 270 some odd, um, tuition students here at Herman High School, that's gonna make a significant impact. And we think we've kind of figured out a way to, um, spend money where it should be spent so that Herman High School benefits, um, from those expenditures. And so just really excited, obviously, to let you all know that, and it was something, again, I just give Jamie all the credit in the world for that. Uh, I'm a good boss, and she brought me in, and I said, go for it. Um, so that, I just, I gave her all the credit. Um, she's, she's brilliant, and, uh, just thank you so much for that. So obviously very excited about that, and we do anticipate our ED 279 hopefully in the next two weeks, and believe that, uh, we're gonna be seeing an increase there as well, and really excited about starting the budget process and working with the town on that, so. Um, and then the only other thing I would say is that currently I'm just beginning to begin drafting a job description for, uh, the IT position and, uh, calling that a network engineering position. One of the things that we have, as you know from the last budget season, we really believe, uh, now that we are going through these upgrades with backward IT and we are beyond the 50% point, uh, we really believe we're short-staffed in that. Uh, we think we have, uh, some, we think we have need for a network engineer, somebody that can keep our network and our complex system, uh, going and going strong. So I'm working on job description, and, uh, really we need that position, so I'm working on drafting that. And I have also been working with Sheriff Horton and trying to get a start date for our SRO. Uh, it's supposed to be this month, and so working with Sheriff Horton and Officer Boyd and trying to get a, a firm date. Um, they're still experiencing shortages, so just trying to get that firm date in place and get that contract signed, so.
Can I ask a question? May I ask a question about the SRO? So, um, I've been talking with some of the sheriffs now, and is, is there a possibility you could share that, um, statistics, how many times they're called, probably most likely in high school with us, like even in the packet every month? I'm just curious to see, like, it was nice to hear directly from the sheriffs how often they are called and how much it is needed, um, and I think that would be useful as us as a board, for me, um, to know the need that's there and kind of, I don't know if that's, he's not even, so I think that's something he tracks anyway. He says something that he could, in your report and/or.
Yep. Well, I'm thinking Mr. Walsh too, in his report as well.
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Oh, okay. I know if you're talking about the gentleman.
Might you do that in the next report if you'd like?
I, I think that'd be great.
I just, I'm curious, um, like, what the, what the calls are for roughly, you know, in general terms. It sounds like it's several times a day sometimes, so, yeah, it adds up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Okay. Anything else on administrative reports?
I am all set. I don't have a principal setting, I think we'll usually ask that.
Anything, anything you need the principals want to follow? Okay. Uh, B Facilities Track Committee, just one report, I think, uh, maybe Haley, you may have already mentioned it, or Steph, uh, we broke around the track on Thursday, so, woohoo. Uh, Kristen, thank you. Um, Finance Committee, again, I had mentioned, last meeting we're targeting, uh, to be in the end of this month, and we're still on target to do that. Uh, D Policy Committee?
We don't have a date we shared at the end of our policy committee that we were, um, Micah brought forward, that we remembered back when Jim was here, that we actually asked MSMA to review all of our, was it, was it MSMA?
Yes.
Yeah, to review all of our policies, and we, and we budgeted for that and paid, and approved it, I remember in a meeting, I think.
So it is not paid for until it is complete.
Okay. But we did show that previously, and I think because of COVID or something, that didn't happen, so we would like that to occur, and then we'll come up with another date.
Yep. Miss, I spoke with Ms. Danielson at NSMA on either Thursday or Friday last week, and she has begun work on reviewing our policy manual and identifying policies that need immediate attention and obviously, um, putting them in a priority order.
Uh, Jesse, back to the facilities, uh, I mean, finance, and is that open to the public? Are you posting those, and can you share those meetings so other people can?
It will be open to the public. We haven't set a date on it yet. Um, just want to make sure, um, Jamie and others have everything prepared before we put a date up there.
We need the ED 279. That's kind of what we're, we're waiting on is that document from the state. Yep. And that can come, Jamie, that.
Anytime. Last year it was released around January 18th. Sometimes it doesn't get released until the first week of February. There's no state deadline. I am stalking that website. I need to refresh, refresh, refresh. So we're, we're hoping to be pretty much ready to go as soon as, as soon as that comes, comes through.
And I did reach out, this would be a good time to mention this, I reached out to Mr. Berry last either Thursday or Friday, and I asked him, using his wisdom, um, I asked him for two town council members to sit on that committee with us as we go through the budget process, so he is going to approach that. I don't want to give anything away there, but he's gonna approach that however he deems necessary, and we would like two council members to sit with us on the budget development process as well.
So that to answer your question, it will absolutely be open to the public.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Technology Committee?
I know that we're meeting this week on Thursday.
Yes, 12, 12. I sent out an invite sometime this morning? 12, 12. Can you check, can you check your email? Have you, or have you checked your email?
I have checked it today.
I checked it today. I had eight emails from constituents in the school and no email from you.
Okay. Um, I did send out an invite. So Tech Committee on Thursday, 12. 12. 3:30. And 1:55. I'll post the agenda on Wednesday.
Good. Spurs?
Nothing to report.
Uh, Finance, Curriculum, Transportation, and Britain, we'll go around the horn for, uh, future, possible future agenda items.
I'll say.
And Debbie?
Thank you.
Haley?
I'm still asking again for a subcommittee policy to be written or to have discussion about subcommittees involving, um, the board. I keep asking every month.
Could, could you clarify, just to?
So either, I had asked last month, do you have a discussion about here tonight to be an agenda item to discuss subcommittee meetings? So I don't, I'd like to either have them look at adding that as a policy, a subcommittee policy to clarify how our subcommittee should run and function, who's supposed to be involved, clarity in our policy for that.
I'm confused. Are you saying you want the entire board to be on every subcommittee?
No, I'm saying we don't have a policy that governs our subcommittee, and we had talked about it back when we were doing B E D H. So.
Well, I guess when we have a review like Mrs. Daniels, we can ask her to clarify that first, and then we can just discussion up there.
Anything else? Seth? Kristen?
I do not.
I do not.
I don't have any.
Uh, it takes us to item nine, a couple of warrants.
I move to approve warrants as listed between December 2nd and December 30th.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Any objections? Thank you. Motion for adjournment.
I move to adjourn. I move to adjourn the meeting at 8:59.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Let you handle this.